Senator Teeter?
Here.
Councilmember Madera?
Here.
Councilmember Frank?
Present.
Councilmember Diaz?
Here.
Councilmember Douglas?
Present.
Councilmember Hughesman?
Present.
Councilmember Elliott?
Present.
Councilmember Wadiola?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. For the record, we are all here this evening. First item on our agenda is an executive session. I'm open for a motion and second to enter into two executive sessions, both pursuant to CRAS 24-6-402, for parents E, for the purpose of developing strategy for negotiations with the City of Brighton regarding boundary issues, and for the purpose of developing strategy for the negotiations with Cronkite Sports Enterprises regarding facility use. Mr. Teeter?
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you. Mr. Wadiola?
Second.
I will motion as second to go into executive sessions for the reasons stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. For the folks in the audience, we're going to be about an hour, hopefully not any longer than that. So, we plan to be back out here around seven o'clock to resume the meeting. You're more than welcome to leave, go grab something to eat, whatever. I hate to have anybody have to just sit here, but I'm assuming an hour is appropriate. Okay? All right, everybody, if you will join me in the back. Thank you.
What's it doing? What are you doing over there, Steve?
Trying to get the light out of his eyes.
Well, I'll take turns holding it until the sun goes down, so none of us actually...
I don't know, the youth commission here tonight. Youth commission. Yeah, there's some youth people here. Oh, it's also M. City Make-A-Wish Foundation project. Who?
Yeah, Ralston House? Yeah, they're not here. Were they here? Yeah, they're gone. Are you guys all ready, it looks like? No, we're waiting for Oscar. Young Oscar. Polo. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here at the city council meeting. Sorry about the delay in the executive session that we had. I'd ask everybody to please stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'm gonna ask the staff to please pass the microphone around and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
I'm Gemma Lett.
I'm Bruno.
I'm Luca.
Diego.
Diego.
Evelyn.
Julie.
Melinda.
Marcus.
Melanie.
Tom Seelick, Kearney Middle School.
Miguel.
Sergio.
Willow.
Liam.
Paula.
Christine McGowan, Rose Hill Elementary School.
Keryn.
Kimberly.
Daphne.
Faith.
Justina.
Daniel.
Brenda.
Angela.
Laura.
Lynn Berkland.
Kent Powell.
Colleen Powell.
Jenny.
Natalia.
Julian.
Joe.
Marco.
Angelica.
Floriselle.
Julia.
Lupe.
Valerie.
Perry Sylvie.
Tamara Graff.
Michael Cassett.
Samantha.
Leilani.
Anna.
Heavenly.
Lizzie.
Mariah.
Stephanie Levine.
Vivi Valera.
Teresa Eskridge.
Shannon Whitmer, Recreation Coordinator for the city.
Carolyn Keith, Parks Recreation and Golf.
Susanna, Kemp Elementary.
Eric.
Valerie.
Jonathan Cardenas.
Janelle Asmus, Adams County School District 14.
Kenneth Scott. Brad Callender, Community Development.
Abraham.
Janelle.
Nancy.
Celia.
Brian Clark, Dupont Elementary School.
Robert Wit... Backwoodfield?
Tracy Whitfield from Dupont Elementary School. Amber Wagner, Dupont Elementary School.
Krista Freeman, 4th Grade Teacher, Dupont Elementary.
Santiago.
Anna.
Diego Rosas.
Lisa Nordholt, Recreation.
Karen O'Donnell, Parks Recreation and Golf.
Mike Brown, Parks Recreation and Golf. Renee Bullock, Sand Creek Regional Greenway.
Sheree Scott, Kemp Elementary.
Well, thank you all for being here tonight and with this many young people in the audience, I expected that process to go a whole lot different, like, "This is who I am. I'm from Kearney Middle School. Go Bobcats! Yay, Adam City!" I just did not expect it to just go poop, 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 poop down the line. I expected to have a little more flair, but that's all right. All righty, thank you all, like I said, for being here. We're gonna start into our recognition portion of our meeting. We're gonna start off by recognizing the Adams County Mayors and Commissioners Youth Awards for 2018. I'd like to invite Shannon Whitmire to present the 2018 Adams County Mayors and Commissioners Youth Awards.
Honorable Mayor and members of City Council, my name is Shannon Whitmer. I'm the Recreation Coordinator for Teens for the City of Commerce City. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the Adams County Mayors and Commissioners Youth Awards tonight. The Adams County Mayors and Commissioners Youth Awards is a program that recognizes teenagers in grades 6 through 12 who have overcome personal adversity to create positive change in their lives. The award program provides businesses, the community, and civic leaders an opportunity to actively demonstrate their support for the young people in all of communities and recognize them for their accomplishments. Award recipients are determined through a nomination selection process. All nominees are recognized at the local level. A selection committee comprised of representatives from the county and local jurisdictions screened all nominations and selected approximately 22 nominees to be recognized at a county-wide celebration in April. Locally, all Commerce City nominees were recognized by City Council at a banquet on March 22 at Buffalo Run Golf Course. Finalists for the county level will be recognized on Thursday, April 19. We would like to recognize the nominees tonight. Sofia DeFiori. Xavier Garcia. Kennedy Laubert. Angela Lopez. DJ Rivera. Brian Rodriguez. Vance Vasquez. And that pictured was Gay Grother Mall. We have two moving on to the county banquet, and those two include Kennedy Laubert and Angela Lopez. Congratulations to all the nominees.
Absolutely. All right, next item is Adam City High School Student Council School District for Make-A-Wish Project. Stephanie Levine is gonna come forward, the Student Council Coordinator, and make a brief presentation. All right. Stephanie, you have the floor.
Okay. Hi, my name is Stephanie Levine. I'm the Student Council Advisor at Adam City High School. So, this year at Adam City High School, our senior class of 2018, they're sitting right here in the front two rows, they attended a fall conference through CHASA. They attend it every year. This year, they decided to bring back the awesome project of Wish Week. Wish Week is for the Make-A-Wish Foundation of Colorado. It's where you host an entire week of fundraising for the benefit of one, well, the benefit of one child who's suffering from a life-threatening illness. All funds raised go to Make-A-Wish Colorado, but they give you a profile as kind of an assignment for students to attach to and kind of just see an example of. This year, during our first year, our students decided to open it up to the entire district to bring the community together, and we totally surpassed expectations. They expect first-year schools to raise between $5,000 and $7,000, and as a district, we raised over $10,000 together.
That's awesome.
So, we had six schools that participated, and I really wanted to recognize every school individually because it was totally a group effort, and everyone really came together as a community to give back to a purpose that was much bigger than I think anything we've ever done prior. So, as you can see up here, the students made a flyer for Wade. Wade is four years old. He is suffering from cancer currently, and we were raising money to make wishes like Wade's Come True. He wanted to go to Disney World, and so our entire theme for the week was Disney. Together, again, we raised a total of $10,001, meaning that next year, our school will hopefully be assigned a profile of a family that would come to the fundraisers, so all of the students in the schools for next year can kind of get to meet the little kid who they're fundraising for. So, I'm gonna call you guys up by school if possible, and if you can kind of come up and gather here, and then one of our ACHS students will present you with your certificate, if that's okay.
If you can, when they come up, have them all stay up here until you're done, and we'll come down and take picture with everybody.
Perfect. Okay, so come up and stay up. So, if the students that are present from Adam City Middle School can come up, please? So, Adam City Middle School raised a total of $488.63. Go ahead and stand over there. There's your plaque. They had a hat drive. They hosted a spirit week. They collected monetary donations. They sold t-shirts. They sold spaghetti dinner tickets, and then they participated in the ACMS vs. KMS teacher volleyball game. So, Lester Arnold High School, come on up. So, Lester Arnold raised a total of $500 through t-shirt sales, monetary donations, spaghetti dinner ticket sales, and their own spirit week. Dupont Elementary, if you guys could come up as well. So, Dupont raised $534.86. They actually researched, planned, advertised, and created handmade items, and they hosted a school-wide artisan market, and all of their proceeds went to Wish Week. Good job, guys. Kemp Elementary, are you guys here? So, Kemp held a giant coin drive, spirit week. They did a Random Acts of Kindness Week. They did a cancer awareness hat drive, sold valentine grams, and then one individual student actually raised $244. So, he is right here. So, their total was $881.81. If Rose Hill could come up, are you guys here? So, they raised over $1,200 just in a coin drive or penny drive, which is pretty incredible, and it weighed a ton. So, it almost broke our coin machine, which is fine. But, yeah, they raised $1,232.78. And then Kearney Middle School raised the most. They raised a total of $2,142.2. So, they did a paid spirit week. Their teachers rocked the volleyball game. They sold t-shirts. They sold spaghetti dinner tickets, bracelet sales, and then they had individual student donations of $100 and even $400. So, they were pretty great. And then lastly, Adam City, you guys come on up. So, these guys individually did all the things you see up here. They raised over $4,200, and then really, they facilitated the fundraising of over $10,000. It takes $7,000 to make one wish come true, and so together, you guys have all made at least Wade's Wish Come True, plus some. So, it's pretty awesome that everyone was able to come together and help for a greater cause. So, good job, you guys.
All right, if the city council come down, and we'll take a picture with these young folks, and if all the young folks will come right up against the dais up here, and we'll be able to get the picture. All right, now we move into our citizen communication portion of our meeting. Per the Council's policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the Council on Business and Affairs of the City. The City Council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before Council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing, and please give your name and address for the record, and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. I'm going to go through the list. There's quite a few names on the list, but I also see some that were for DuPont Support and Kemp, and I know some of those folks have left. So when I call your name, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes to communicate to the Council your concerns. We'll start with Jonathan Cardenas, is that correct? Come on up.
Jonathan Cardenas, 11347 Perris Street. Thank you for hearing me. In 2016, there was 97 work-related deaths amongst officers in the United States and 108 suicides. In 2017, there was 112 work-related deaths and 140 suicides. So far this year, if the numbers continue at this rate, we're looking at 330 officer deaths in the United States. And our, our backyard is not free from this. You know, with the death of Officer Gum, and two weeks ago, we had a Broomfield officer that shot herself. What my family does is twice a year, we do a meal for the Adams County Sheriff's Department up in Brighton. But with the issues going on this year, we decided to expand, and we've coordinated with the Commerce City Police Department, Brighton Police Department, Colorado State Patrol, and the Adams County Sheriffs to do this meal on three different days this year. We've grown from 100 to this year, we're going to do 900. We have reached out to the Brighton 27th School District and Adams County, Adams District 14 to get the students involved. We're asking for letters and pictures for our officers for this appreciation meal that we're having. The Veterans Affairs is presenting the colors, and we have some other things planned, but I'm here to invite you to come and show appreciation for our officers. Come and feel free to come and eat with them. There are three different dates. Two of them are in Brighton, one of them is in Commerce City at the substation. If you feel like you feel inclined to say a few words, we would love that as well. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I think it's a great opportunity to show support for our police departments, not just Commerce Cities, but for the neighboring police departments. They all work together on critical issues, as we saw with Deputy Gum. So we appreciate what you're doing, and we'd like to have those dates to be able to participate for those of us that can, that can come out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Tamara Graff.
Hello, Tamara. Good evening, Tamara Graff, 15862 East 107th Avenue in Commerce City. I'm calling, or I came to draw your attention, I received an appli, a copy of an application for the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission for the State of Colorado. Basically, they'd like to start drilling oil underneath Reunion and Buffalo Mesa. And so I have some concerns, and I'd like to ask the Council what they might be able to do to protect homeowners and taxpayers. Concerns are about ground shifting, air quality, noise, and the contamination of our water. I'd like to know what the city can do to help monitor if we have a designee who could advocate for us. Do we have standards as a city that can help protect how close this gets to our homes? Right now, it sounds like it's going to go right underneath it. What are we doing to protect not only our homes, but our schools too? Because there are several schools in the area that would be impacted. Yeah, two schools in the area that would be impacted. And then are our open spaces protected as well? So my concerns are to bring that to you to help advocate for us and keep us safe. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you for coming in. I want to touch on a couple of things that we did do several years ago. We had some oil and gas issues come into our community. There was a well-
Teal is the official color of Sam. The teal ribbon is the symbol of sexual violence prevention. To further demonstrate Commerce City's commitment to Sam, we will pass out You Have Options bracelets to every city employee. In an effort to continue our public awareness... Sorry, in an effort to continue our public awareness campaign, we will place window decals on cars and encourage any city staff member that would like one to put on their car as well. The Commerce City Police Department, as a certified You Have Options agency, remains committed to offering reporting options to victims of sexual assault while responding to sexual violence with a victim-centered, offender-focused approach. By wearing Y-Hot bracelets, our city demonstrates this year's Sam theme, embrace your voice, and our continued commitment to ending sexual violence in our community.
Thank you. Just really quickly, as mentioned in the proclamation, the Sexual Assault Task Force is operational. As you are aware, we've been evaluating our response to sexual assaults over the last few years. And this is just a continuation of our goal of being the standard of excellence, not only in the region, but also in the nation. And I would also like to thank you for your support with the funding and backing to get the Sex Assault Response... Sex Assault Task Force up and running. We will also be participating in National Denim Day in conjunction with the Seventeenth Judicial SART, which is April 25th. On that day, employees will be encouraged to wear denim. And lastly, we will be launching 12 billboards throughout the area in support of our You Have Options program. I'd like to give our SART coordinator a minute to address you.
Hi, my name's Goshia Schmitz, and I'm the Seventeenth Judicial Sex Assault Response Team Coordinator. Thank you for taking the time to issue this proclamation recognizing April as Sex Assault Awareness Month. The Sex Assault Response Team is a multidisciplinary group formed in 2010. The SART's mission is to reduce the impact of sexual violence by producing or by providing a consistent, competent, and comprehensive response to all victims of sexual assault in the Seventeenth Judicial District. In order to fulfill this mission, our approach is to utilize a victim-centered, offender-focused, with a multidisciplinary process. With the implementation of SART in various programs, policies, and guidelines, Commerce City Police Department has become a leader not only in the Seventeenth Judicial District, but in the state of Colorado in its response to sexual assault and support of victims. Consistently, Commerce City Police Department has taken initiative with best practice and the implementation of those best practices. The work that Commerce City Police Department has done with SART could not be done without the support of this city council. It is with your support and the proclamation you are issuing today that we are able to support victims of sexual assault and to take a stand as a community against sexual violence. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, if council will join me down front, I want to make sure these folks know that we appreciate everything they do to keeping our residents safe and giving them options when they do have these problems. So, we appreciate you. All right, now we move into our citizen communication portion of our meeting. Per council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the council on business and affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing, and please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. I'm going to go through the list. There's quite a few names on the list, but I also see some that were for DuPont Support and Camp, and I know some of those folks have left. So, when I call your name, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes to communicate to the council your concerns. We'll start with Jonathan Cardenas. Is that correct? Come on up.
Jonathan Cardenas, 11347 Perris Street. Thank you for hearing me. In 2016, there was 97 work-related deaths amongst officers in the United States and 108 suicides. In 2017, there was 112 work-related deaths and 140 suicides. So far this year, if the numbers continue at this rate, we're looking at 330 officer deaths in the United States. And our backyard is not free from this. You know, with the death of Officer Gum, and two weeks ago, we had a Broomfield officer that shot herself. What my family does is twice a year, we do a meal for the Adams County Sheriff's Department up in Brighton. But with the issues going on this year, we decided to expand, and we've coordinated with the Commerce City Police Department, Brighton Police Department, Colorado State Patrol, and the Adams County Sheriffs to do this meal on three different days this year. We've grown from 100 to this year, we're going to do 900. We have reached out to the Brighton 27th School District and Adams County, Adams District 14, to get the students involved. We're asking for letters and pictures for our officers for this appreciation meal that we're having. The Veterans Affairs is presenting the colors, and we have some other things planned. But I'm here to invite you to come and show appreciation for our officers. Come and feel free to come and eat with them. There are three different dates. Two of them are in Brighton. One of them is in Commerce City at the substation. If you feel like you feel inclined to say a few words, we would love that as well. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I think it's a great opportunity to show support for our police departments, not just Commerce Cities, but for the neighboring police departments. They all work together on critical issues, as we saw with Deputy Gum. So, we appreciate what you're doing, and we'd like to have those dates to be able to participate for those of us that can come out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Tamara Graff. Good evening.
Good evening, Tamara Graff, 15...
Graff, I'm sorry.
That's okay, bad handwriting. 15862 East 107th Avenue in Commerce City. I'm calling, or I came to draw your attention. I received a copy of an application for the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission for the state of Colorado. Basically, they'd like to start drilling oil underneath Reunion and Buffalo Mesa. And so, I have some concerns, and I'd like to ask the council what they might be able to do to protect homeowners and taxpayers. Concerns are about ground shifting, air quality, noise, and the contamination of our water. I'd like to know what the city can do to help monitor. If we have a designee who could advocate for us, do we have standards as a city that can help protect how close this gets to our homes? Right now, it sounds like it's going to go right underneath it. What are we doing to protect not only our homes, but our schools too? Because there are several schools in the area that would be impacted. No, yeah, two schools in the area that would be impacted. And then, are our open spaces protected as well? So, my concerns are to bring that to you to help advocate for us and keep us safe. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you for coming in. I want to touch on a couple of things that we did do several years ago. We had some oil and gas issues come into our community. There was a well near South Lawn's in unincorporated Adams County that they were reworking and taking from a single well to a horizontal well. And so, they had to frac that well. Part of the problem is the state of Colorado controls all the jurisdiction for the rights for these companies to access their property rights. Now, one of the things that Commerce City did, we hired an attorney. We put a short moratorium on oil and gas so that we could sort out what we had, the ability and jurisdictional standards and authority to set forth parameters that we could do. So, currently, we have extraction agreement that has to be entered into by any company intending to drill a well in Commerce City. That extraction agreement, depending on how close it is to residents and everything else, would depend on setbacks, noise monitoring, air monitoring, impact to public infrastructure, a lot of those type of things. Jurisdictionally, we are only able to manage surface rights, not downhole oil and gas rights. And that's the state's responsibility. And there's a lot of legislation currently going on at the state. Now, there were some hearings, or supposed to be some hearings. They postponed those, correct, Steve?
Right.
All right. But that's not Commerce City jurisdiction. That's the G-O-C-C, Colorado Oil and Gas Association. I talked to our city manager today, and he assured me that as of today, we have not received any applications for permits for any oil activity to date. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager? Could you please address those points?
Yes, we are a referral agency by the C-O-G-C-C, so we do receive those applications, and we have the opportunity to comment. But as the mayor's indicating, any drilling activity within city limits will require a separate permit from the city. And as of this date, we've not received any applications for any surface activity related to oil and gas.
Correct. Now, there are a lot of things going on around the area. There are companies that are trying to engage in... Trying to engage in leases for oil and gas rights. Areas like Reunion, was owned by Shay Holmes. They sold those oil and gas rights off to, you know, or leased them to oil and gas companies. That's something that is a private business between the landowner or the oil and gas rights owner and these companies that they're leasing those rights to. We don't have the ability to get in between those private dealings between them and the owner of the rights. So, we are limited in what we can do. But what we did do, and I think we were the first city to step up and really put something in place with our extraction agreement that we have now, I would ask that you can reach out to our planning department, and they can get you the information of what the extraction agreement is. And they're the department that would also receive that notice of request for permit for any activity for oil and gas in our city.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to address to this young lady, Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you for coming in and addressing this potential activity. I was going to ask city manager, Big Broom, if there's any way that we could, since we have a designee and there's COGA, I mean, they're going to have hearings. And the hearings are the first part of the month, every month, that we at least notify our citizens if they want to go and testify when this comes up. So, at least they can go before that board and address their issues at the time they're permitting any kind of spacings or so outside of what the city's doing. Because we do have a policy there. But at least they have an avenue where they could turn to and show up at the hearing, either listen or take part in testifying.
Yes, in this evening's city manager update, we provided to city council, to be posted on our website as well, a current list of COG-C applications within the city's boundaries. In addition, we're looking at providing that information and updating it regularly on the city's website. So, the goal would be to share with interested folks where they can get information on the city's website. And we'll do our best to keep that information updated with information like hearing dates.
Okay, thank you.
Is it possible to get a listserv that people could sign up for those kind of updates?
Well, that's the COG-C organization. Those permits aren't being asked of the city. They're being asked of the Oil and Gas Commission, correct, Brian?
Correct. Again, we receive notice as a referral agency. I don't know if the COG-C allows something like a mailing list or a listserv. I know that as we receive those notices, we'll, our intent is to update our website. So, it might just be a matter of checking regularly on the city's website.
And also, you can go on, I believe, COGA's website, and you can sign up to receive text messages or email of upcoming hearing.
Okay.
And COGA would be the Colorado Oil and Gas Association?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, Perry Sylvie, is that correct, hopefully?
Yes, you're correct. Perry Sylvie, 10487 Euray Street. And I'm actually here to support Tamara, who she and I both live in the neighborhood. And so, I didn't receive a notice like she did. And so, I was curious what this was all about. So, I wanted to at least come and see if I can learn some more about this issue. And I've learned a lot just being here. So, I appreciate all the comments and the information, again, Douglas, Mr. Douglas, that you had brought to us. I definitely learned a lot through even some of the other people that have come here today. So, definitely something to learn through this process of oil and gas and mineral rights and everything that goes through this process, you know, that our houses sit on. So, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Good.
Carly.
I'm also here about the gas and oil. I've spent the last couple of weeks trying to call all the different people.
Can I get your address, please?
Oh, can you hear me now? I'm Carly Seller, 10563 Joplin Street, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thanks.
I'm here also on the fracking. I've spent the last couple of weeks making contact with some of the various people on this application. And what I learned was that the 200 people that did receive this application for spacing is we do own our mineral rights. And I went back to the title company from when I originally purchased my house in 2006, and I got confirmation, and I have copies of those original pieces of paper, the deeds, the quitclaim deed, things like that. So, what I have learned is that this company has not formally applied to Commerce City, but their intention is to drill at the corner of 112th and Tower Road. They will have over 56 miles of underground drilling in our area. So, that's Buffalo Mesa, Reunion. I'm not exactly sure, but it goes all the way up to the golf course and beyond. It's approximately a two-mile area. There are about 200 of us that own the property mineral rights, and then, nobody else does. So, that's kind of an interesting thing. I just want to stress that it's so important that the city have the appropriate expertise on staff to help us with this. I realize that it's not a process where you can say, no, you can't do it. Everybody's hands are tied. But I think this is an opportunity for us to mitigate and get the very best testing procedures for our air, for our water. We're on bennonite soil, so some of the encasing for the gas and oil lines will be in concrete. I know from my experiences at the airport, we have to do all kinds of special things to mitigate concrete destruction because of the bennonite soil. I know my house sits on bennonite soil. So, I'm just asking the city to please be aware of all of our concerns. I've been in touch with Chris Kramer. He's been very helpful. He said that Extraction Gas and Oil has not begun a process with the city. But Extraction informed me that the 200 people on this list, that we would be getting our lease agreements in the next six to eight weeks. If we do not sign them, what I understand is that the state will simply take over, and we will get a lesser offer. But it will go on. The Colorado Gas and Oil, the C-O-G-G-C, I've called them many times, and we can't seem to get a point of contact so that our community could just have one person that we knew was actually handling this. The name that was provided on this particular list is just kind of a blanket, and I understand he receives hundreds of these every month, and he's not necessarily our POC. So, if the city could work with us to get us an actual point of contact so that we would have someone to go to that could help us explain to us, help us mitigate for the underground portion, I would really appreciate it.
Well, and again, I want to thank you for coming in. And I think it's important that you know and that everybody else knows, we did enter, we did get a very good oil and gas attorney to support what we could legally do based on jurisdiction for this extraction agreement that we have put into place that the Oil and Gas G-O-C has agreed to pursue, you know, and allow. So, we pushed it as far to the line as we could to make sure surface damages and surface rights, air and water and all that stuff is protected through that extraction agreement. And we're constantly having to update it based on state law. But you're more than welcome to get with Chris and get a copy of how that works and what that entails, depending on where it is.
Is this attorney somebody that's on the city staff?
No, not anymore. We hired a special attorney to handle that negotiation to put in place the best, the best thing that we could have in place based on our jurisdictional authority.
Okay.
Okay? So, Chris has all of those details. I was really happy and pleased that we were able to put that kind of an extraction agreement together. Now, the company that you talked about, Extraction?
Yeah.
I know right now, they're doing a well, and it's been going on for quite some time on 136th, just to the east of Sable. And because I drive by to go to Home Depot all the time.
Oh, I know where that is. There's a nursery right there, right?
Yeah, there's a sod farm and stuff like that. That's an Extraction well. And I know there's interest in this area. And so, when it comes to personal rights and rights that developers have kept for oil and gas, that differs all over our city. The residents of River Run, all of the residents of at least filing one, the filing I'm in, we all retained with the purchase of our property, our oil and gas rights. Some of the other subdivisions that are near us, like Steel Water and River Oaks, those kind of developments, some of them didn't retain some of those rights. So, it just depends on who owns those rights, who those leases are going to be with. And then, what you're talking about, the state taking over, that is their process of forced pooling. So, once they have so many signatures, then they don't have to have any more, and it's more of a voluntary thing. But they can still force pool you to be able to get to their rights.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand that.
Okay, all right. So, I appreciate you coming in, and the city will do what we can jurisdictionally, and our staff representative with Mr. Kramer is there for our residents and to help through the process.
Well, Chris has been extremely helpful so far.
That's great.
So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you for coming in. Did you want to say anything?
Oh, I just wanted to add, is there a place under the oil and gas on our website that shows what our regulations are that we put in place with COGA?
The city's surface use application permit requirements are contained in the Land Development Code, which is under the Code Central section on the website. So, I don't know the exact section that it's in. I believe it's under Development Review, which might be Section 3. But under Code Central, the Land Development Code will have that for oil and gas permits.
All right, can we provide a link on our website? So, if our citizens want to inquire about that, they can. Thanks.
Next, this one I'm going to have trouble with because I'm, maybe you can help me, Steve. Lynn, Lynn something, come on up. State your name and address for the record, please. And, yeah, just state your name and address, and that'll...
Lindberg, 115892 East 107th Avenue. I think we've probably talked about this enough. I'm just trying to find out more about the city, how the city can help the landowner out. But you get a letter, and you get a rectangle, and you have no idea where it's going to be located and how it'll affect me personally and my neighbors. I'm assuming that the fracking company will have meetings, but I'm hoping the city will do what they can.
Well, we can only hope so. Matter of fact, I believe that's one of the pieces in our extraction agreement that they have to hold so many neighborhood meetings. But I recently met with the company Extraction. I'd never met them before. They wanted to meet with me. I took the city attorney along. It wasn't for any particular place they were planning to do anything. And I explained to them that if they're going to do anything or have any intention to do anything in our city, that they need to start first by reaching out to the residents that would be affected so that they know exactly what they're doing, where they're doing it, and why they're doing it. And, you know, the downside to being on the municipal side of the government is on this issue, the state controls the jurisdiction of anything downhole. So, we struggle to put into place the best things that we can for surface rights to protect our residents with setbacks, noise, air, water, all the things that we have done. And we continue to update that extraction agreement. And it's dependent, it's negotiated, dependent upon how close to residential units these operations could be. So, I can't stress enough that there are applications into the G-O-C-C for operations to happen in Commerce City. Commerce City has not received an application for permit to date. And when we receive that application, that's when they would be required to enter into that extraction agreement and so on. Hopefully, everybody in the room learned a little bit about what we can and can't do and what we have done up to this point. But we want to make sure everybody in our community is safe to the best of our authority, and that's what our intention is to do. So, thank you, all of you, for all coming in and bringing your concerns forward. Because we not only hear this in this setting, we go to the grocery store, people talk to us. We, you know, it doesn't matter. We're in the community, we live here too. We would have the similar effects and similar concerns because we're also residents. So, we want the safest, best result for our community, but we also understand that the state controls how oil and gas operations are done. So, we're kind of in a fine line of what we can and can't do, and we will push that to the limit for our residents to ensure the best safety that we as a council can without overstepping our authority into the state realm. And hopefully, everybody understands exactly, that came across exactly the way I wanted it to. So, thank you all for being here. And more than welcome to reach out to the staff or council members whenever you need for any questions. We'll do our best to make sure you're informed with everything that we have. Steve?
Mayor, yes, I would like to ask the council to make a motion for the city to add a subpage dedicated to oil and gas as a one-stop location for a resident seeking information.
Brian?
Specific direction from council is always helpful and useful, although that's what we're in the process of doing.
All right. So, we're already doing it, but you want to do a motion?
Yeah.
All right, is there a second? All right, Mr. Huesman?
I'll second Councilman Douglas's motion.
All right, I have a motion to second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. So, that should give you some direct communication with our city so that you have that information. But thank you all for coming in. And to go on down the list for folks that are here for, other than fracking, that was the list on the fracking concerns, we'll go to Mr. Renee Bullock.
How do you operate this? Honorable mayor and city council, my name is Renee Bullock, 6130... 6130 Ivanhoe Street, Commerce City, Colorado. I am here representing the Sand Creek Regional Greenway. I left, play, pamphleted each one's place regarding, yes, sir, the evening with John Fielder benefit for the Sand Creek Regional Greenway on May 4th, 2018 at The Cube in North Fields. And my appeal tonight is to come before the city council and ask for money and sell tickets. I have a comrade on city council that is doing the same thing and I hope I'm not stepping on your toes. I, have you already made this appeal?
No.
No, I haven't sold them tickets yet.
Oh, okay. Each of us were given six tickets to sell. I'm going to try to sell nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 here tonight if I could get the council, because I would love to see, because Commerce City is one of the three cities that is in the Sand Creek Regional Greenway and because our part with our, in part of the trail with the Weaver property and the, I'm not going to say what I was going to say, but the other property there at the end of the trail is about to be completed. It should be completed by at least the first of June. We will have our section complete and we will have a trail and a trailhead that overlooks Sand Creek and the South Platte. So what I would like to do, if I could get at least six of you tonight to say that you would like to buy tickets, and then the other ones would be buy Oscar six tickets. Me and Oscar can say that we are done selling our tickets and all we have to do is then hit up our family and everyone. So who would like to be first?
I'm sorry.
Oh, the tickets are $25 apiece. And let me give you some information with this. It's going to be a silent auction. We're going to have a, the Aurora Symphony Woodwinds Trio playing Cole Porter, George Gershon, and other classical pieces. The emcee for the night is somebody you all know. And we are going to be selling books and everything and donate, 30% of the donations of the book sale will be added to this project. So, wow.
Sorry, sir, but I've got to cut you off there.
Yes, sir.
I'm just kidding. So hopefully you can talk to some of the folks in the audience that may want a ticket. You can go out in the hallway when he's done and purchase a ticket. But I'd like to ask the council what they'd like to do on the city's end. Mr. Teeter?
Well, Renee, I hope you have a lot of success selling your tickets. But I did look at this date right here and I am going to be throwing a 70th birthday party for the class of 1966 on this evening. So I will not be attending your function. But I want to say this is a very worthy function. It's a great organization. It does a lot for our trails over here and the creek, on the Sand Creek Avenue over here. So if you're going to support this thing, please do.
Mr. Huesman?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that the city support the Sand Creek Regional Greenway by purchasing 20 tickets for this event to be distributed to members wishing to attend.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Is there a second? I have a second from Mr. Teeter to purchase 20 tickets for Sand Creek Regional Greenway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I'd like half of the sales of those to go to Mr. Madera.
Yes.
I'm teasing with you, Renee.
No, I'm serious. 10 and 10. Me and Mr. Madera will split that evenly because of the fact that we can go back to the next meeting and we can laugh at everybody else and say, we've sold our tickets and we went above and beyond.
Well, you worked that out between the two of you. As far as I'm concerned, the council just said we'd buy the tickets. So you're up here asking us to buy them from you. So thank you for coming in tonight and we'll look forward to seeing you at that event.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And anybody in the audience that's interested in buying a $25 ticket to go see the Woodwind Trio and have some hors d'oeuvres and help out the Sand Creek Regional Greenway, you can see Mr. Bullock in the hallway. All right. I think the others on the list may have left, but I'm going to call their names just to make sure. Brian Clark. Let's see. Susanna Torres. And Eric Torres. Yeah, I believe they're all with the schools. That takes care of our list for citizen communication. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come up for citizen communication and be allotted their three minutes to converse with the council? Saying no, and we're moving on in the agenda. So we come to the consent agenda portion of our meeting. Consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are 11 items listed under the consent agenda. There is one item that I need to have removed because it was on there in error for the Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District. It should not be on there. So that one will be scratched because we will have a NIGID meeting following our council meeting and that will be considered at that time. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda for further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes. Resolution 2018-26.
Okay. Is there any others? Mr. Huesman?
Yes. Z 898-18.
Z 898-18. All right. Is there any others? Saying none, would ask that the city attorney please read the titles of the consent agenda.
Resolution 2018-12, resolution authorizing the service and consumption of alcohol at recreation centers and the establishment of rules related thereto. Resolution 2018-27, resolution approving intergovernmental agreement for education access programming with Adams County School District 14. Resolution 2018-20, resolution authorizing amendment to Parks Division PGW ROW maintenance contract. Ordinance 2156, an ordinance amending Article 10 of Chapter 20 of the Commerce City Revised Code to impose a voter-approved excise tax on the wholesale transfer of marijuana and marijuana products to support public safety and modifying the definitions and administrative provisions contained therein. Ordinance 2157, an ordinance reenacting and ratifying ordinance 2134, amending the 2017 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance of the general fund in the amount of $471,197 and transferring a portion of the unencumbered fund balance in the general fund to the CIPP fund in the amount of $305,561, transferring $42,310 from the Information Technology Fund to the CIPP fund and appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance in the NIGID fund in the amount of $68,565, the fleet fund in the amount of $47,517, Urban Renewal Authority Fund in the amount of $102,248, and the police donation fund in the amount of $45,622 for a total amount of $1,083,020 and authorizing the expenditure thereof. Ordinance AN 24517A, an ordinance reenacting and ratifying ordinance AN 24517, approving the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A attached here to and made apart herof, generally located north of East, north of East 104th Avenue and west of Chambers Road, Commerce City, Colorado. Ordinance Z 781 0204 0506 101718A, an ordinance reenacting and ratifying ordinance Z 781 0204 0506 1017, approving the Reunion in P O D Zone document amendment number four. Ordinance 2162, an ordinance creating Section 11-2104 of the Commerce City Traffic Code Regarding Persons Remaining in Medians. Thank you.
Thank you. So the, I need a motion as second to approve the consent agenda as read. Mr. Teeter?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Thank you. Mr. Wadiola?
Second.
I have a second. I need to ask for a roll call vote on the consent agenda.
One moment, please.
Sure.
Start. Okay, there you go.
For the record, the consent agenda has been approved unanimously by the city council this evening. We have two items that were pulled from the, the consent agenda to take individual action on. We'll start with Resolution 2018-26, a resolution authorizing award of contract for citywide custodial services to the Town and Country Development Corporation. Mr. Douglas, you pulled that off the consent agenda and you can give us your reasoning for doing so.
Okay. I pulled this off. I know last year we awarded this contract to A B and M Industry Groups. Two cleaner facilities, Parks and Recs, the Gulf, the city facility here. And, you know, at that time, prior to that, we had our winter retreat. We talked about the city being employer choice. And so, you know, that was at that time, same thing under, under approval of council. And that got approved. I did say that, why didn't we look internal as far as offering those jobs as city jobs because they, you know, it is hard. One thing to retain a job and also it's hard to get a job here in Colorado because the competition is, is high. And I know that as far as city employees, city provided jobs, the, the city does treat and support our employees very well. So I saw that was a missed opportunity. So my thing was is when the new rec center comes up, at that time, you know, we're, it's going to be over a year out that we prepare ourselves to look at staffing, to custodial work at that facility. Because I understand this contract, the work is done after hours, not during the day. And I know, I do believe we did hire a, a engineer for the building as far as maintaining the mechanics of the building. And I'm sure the employees at the rec center with all our services, people will be trained to clean whatever through whatever they're classed, they're, they're teaching. The reason why I brought this up is that this also includes the Cameron Rec Center and that this is going to be a three-year agreement to look, to look out in the future of making that as far as city employees not contracted out. So I just think we just kind of short sighted this because this happened back in February of this year. And in between then, we, there should have been some sort of study session to discuss this based on the amount we're going to award tonight. I also noticed the scope of, of work may have, I'm not saying that it was, and this is what the city had alluded to, that through the understanding of the scope of work, there's likely due to either not understanding the, the required scope of work or to save money. And, you know, that's, that's my thing with contracted labor is, you know, we don't have control over those folks that work there. And when you are a city employee, where you are your company employee, you're going to take pride in where you work. And so you're going to look out and you're going to go beyond your expectations or city expectations of what the service is. So, and I understand that this being, we don't have that time for the facilities to be cleaned and hire people for overall work. I still would like for that new rec center because that's part of the 1% sales tax is also taken care of from our residents to be city employees. And so I'm only in favor of this only if this is amended to show that we are, that, that rec center is not tied to three-year agreement and that going forward, we look at staffing, because there's only going to be a handful of people. I'm not sure it's going to be 30 people to clean that rec center. So I would looked at, I would like to look at this in a way to amend what's before us and not include the new rec center as contracted here.
All right. So we heard from Steve. I'd like to have Brian, the city manager, explain why this is before us and why we're using outside services versus inside services to hopefully answer some of councilmen's questions.
It was necessary for the city to rebid this work. We did have to cancel the contract with the contractor that was hired a year ago. They were not meeting the terms and conditions and the level of service that were spelled out in the contract. We still believe that contracting for those services is the most cost-effective way to provide the level of service that staff and patrons would expect at those facilities, including, including this building. Although the contract is structured in a shorter timeframe, that was not for the purpose of us hiring staff to do that work. Our intent was to use contracted services for the foreseeable future to do that work. I believe the city council could provide us a different direction. I think that's within city council's authority to do that. But it would be our recommendation at this time that we proceed with this contract and provide those services through, through a service company.
All right. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Douglas?
This is not a motion. Just wanted to also say that it is noted here that last year the council did approve that we did, that we, when this new rec center is open, that we look at hiring city employees and not contracted. That was stated in our letter as well.
Certainly, part of the evaluation in the future could be whether city employees would be a, a better way of providing those services. Certainly, it will be necessary to get the facility up and running to enable us to do that. At this time, it looks as if contracting those services will be the most cost-effective way to provide those services. But we're certainly open and, open to looking at that.
Okay. I understand about the, the cleaning of the facility, but also looking at the safety and the care of the facility as well. Even with the new rec center being renovated, you know, I think we need to take those extra steps because here we're, we have asked our residents to invest in the city where they live. So we need to make sure that we invest in taking care of those properties going forward. And I think, you know, it's not always easy to say that we'll contract things up, but sometimes, you know, that's, in light of saving money, things had to be contracted out. But like I said, as discussed last year when this came up about us being the employer of choice, this was an opportunity, again, for us to provide jobs to our residents. So like I said, I, I would like to, to change that and, and that's my, my motion I stated earlier.
So you want to make a formal motion there?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion that we go for with this contract in lieu of, I mean, with also the ability to hire city employees to do custodial work at the new rec center, Bison Ridge.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but the downside is I don't think if we approve this contract that you can hire city employees.
No, no, it's just to continue this here, but look at...
In the future.
In the future.
I got you.
Of hiring city employees to replace that.
So you're making a motion to approve this resolution with the caveat or amendment that we look at whether we can do it better in-house. Right?
For the new rec center.
Right. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a motion as second. Is there any discussion before I call for the vote? Yep, Mr. Diaz?
So question, Mr. Douglas, on your amendment to this. So if we, so this, would this contract... So if we, so would this contract, if approved, would be through 2018? With the idea that we will study better ways to do it for 2019? Like what would be the date for this contract?
Well, the date right now is three years. But as far as the new rec center, within one year, looking at replacing those, that custodial position with the city employees.
Okay.
Everybody clear on Mr. Douglas's motion? All right, any other discussion? Ask for a roll call vote this time, just because I want to make sure that we don't get everybody confused. So roll call vote on the motion and second on the table. For the record, motion is approved. Seven in favor, two opposed. All right, next item that was pulled from the consent agenda, Z 898-18. All righty, Mr. Huesman. This is one that you brought up to have removed. Dealing with the zoning ordinance and zoning map for rezoning of PUD's own district and approving a PUD's own document for the properties described in Exhibit A attached hereto and a part of, located at 8470 and 8510 East 86th Avenue in Commerce City, Colorado. Explain why you pulled that off the consent agenda.
Yes, sir, thank you. During the presentation we received on March 5th on this item, it was discovered that the property owner to the north of 86th Avenue was held to a different improvement standard, 486th Avenue, than the property that is under consideration. At the end of the meeting during administrative council business, Mayor Ford made a motion that the city reach back out to the property owners and determine what can be done to corrupt the different standards there. So my question is, has the city staff corrected this issue? Or is there still ambiguity based on the standards?
What city staff is in the process of doing is researching the conditions under which there was a public improvement agreement for the property on the north side of the street. But there is not a public improvement agreement as part of the approval on the south side of the street. So I understood the need was to reach out to the property owner on the north side of the street. I think staff has finished their research to understand why a PIA was required on the north side of the street. I think that occurred before Ms. DeAndres' time here with the city. So it's still our intent to do that consistent with council's direction.
Thank you. So just to clarify that this hasn't been corrected. So at this time, I can't support this motion.
All right, I don't have a motion on the floor yet. But we still have to take up Z 898-18 and I am open for a motion. Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
No, we already did the consent agenda. I need
Which one was it?
Ordinance Z 898-18.
Okay, I got it here now. Ordinance Z 898-18. Make motion to approve that.
All right, is there a second? Mr. Madera.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance Z 898-18 on second reading, council, as seated. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Motion fails, four to five. So Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right.
Mayor Ford.
Yes, sir.
May I recommend that the city council enter executive session for the provision of legal advice relative to that matter?
We'll open it up for a motion to do so. Mr. Diaz.
Motion to enter into executive session.
And that would be pursuant to 402, 4E of the, or 4, I apologize, 4B of the open meetings law.
So moved.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session pursuant to the reasons stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried, will be in executive session. And hopefully we won't be too long, we'll be back into our meeting. Thank you for your patience.
All right, we're back in regular session. Thank you for your patience. And we are still at, ordinance is on second reading. And we just voted on ordinance Z eight nine eight dash one eight. And it failed. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Hughesman.
I'd like to make a motion that we reconsider ordinance Z eight nine eight dash one eight.
Thank you. And for the record, I want to state that it has to be somebody who voted against that on the winning side of that ordinance, on that, the winning side of that vote to be able to be, bring up a reconsideration. So I have a motion, Mr. Wardiola.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to reconsider ordinance eight nine eight dash one eight on second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is, is approved. Now I'm open for a motion on Z eight nine eight dash one eight. Mr. Hughesman.
Thank you. Make a motion that we continue the review of ordinance Z eight nine eight dash one eight for the purpose of the city to be able to do more research.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas.
Second.
May I clarify for the motion maker? That would be to the next city council meeting on April sixteenth.
To the motion maker.
I would say as much time as the city needs in order to provide the requested information.
I would recommend April sixteenth so that the hearing does not need to be re-noticed, and that should be sufficient time.
Okay, April sixteenth it is. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas, is that good with you?
Agreed.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to continue ordinance eight nine eight one eight to April sixteenth. I need a roll call vote on that or a voice vote suffice? I think a voice vote works, right? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. All right, now, we're going to go into public hearings. No, I guess we're not. Yes, I think we are. Yeah, public hearings. Ordinance Z nine five zero dash one eight. I'm going to go ahead and open that public hearing and invite the staff forward to give their presentation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. This is case number Z dash nine five zero dash one eight. A request for a zone change from IAG to I one. The property owner is DAS MS, MWS, excuse me, thirteen LLC. The applicant is baseline engineering. Briefly, zone changes are when the allowed uses of the property are modified with a change to a new zoning district, and that would alter building setback requirements, landscape requirements, and design standards that are applicable to the underlying district that's changed. The subject property is located in the blue outline here on the screen. The property is currently zoned agricultural. As you can see, properties to the south, to the east, and to the west are also zoned agricultural. Properties to the north of eighty-eighth Avenue across the property, across from the property, are zoned I two. The future land use plan designates this property as industrial distribution, and properties along eighty-eighth Avenue have a similar designation on the future land use map. Properties just to the east are designated with residential low density. The site is currently undeveloped, as shown here in the illustrated photographs, as you can see from various angles of the properties.
Brad, could I, excuse me, could I interrupt you for a quick second?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Callender, switch to the next zoning case on the agenda. We're just, let us check real quick to make sure we don't have to amend the agenda to do them out of order.
Which one are we on?
Z nine five oh one eight is what I have as next.
No, I don't have that next.
According to my documents that I have, Z nine five zero one eight. And then according to what I have on the computer, it's different. It's resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-two.
So in order for, to clarify, just so the council is on the same page, a motion or consent to consider Z nine five oh one eight at this point would allow the presentation to continue as is.
I need a motion to amend the agenda to move Z nine five zero one eight to the top of the list under public hearings with the other two to come after. Mr. Teeter.
So moved.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Second.
I have that motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, now we'll get back into it. So go ahead and continue.
And as you can see, the property is currently undeveloped. The applicant's request for the council this evening, the applicant's requesting to change the zone of the property from agricultural to I one, and the purpose for this, based on their request, is to increase the marketability of the site. The property has been owned by the same family for approximately seventy years, and the owners would now like to sell the property. The existing subdivision plat for this tract, as you can see that it fronts along eighty-eighth Avenue to the north, and then Willow Street lies just to the east of the property itself. This was a subdivision plat that was approved by council last year. The, the planning commission used this criteria for the consideration of the zone change. This is just a quick list of that. And further into the PC analysis, based on the applicant's request, the planning commission believed that the proposed rezoning was justified. Rezoning the property will allow development for the property in compliance with the comprehensive plan. The zoning change is consistent with the existing developments along the eighty-eighth Avenue corridor. And traditionally, the city does require specific development plans for rezoning requests because the Irondale area had, has been studied extensively, and the future land use plan is far more parcel-specific in this area. The planning commission was comfortable with an I one designation for this property without a development plan. On March sixth, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval as submitted to city council regarding this case. And as of today, the staff has not received a request for additional information or objections to the zone change request. And that's all that I have on behalf. Answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions for the staff at this time? Mr. Douglas.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. You know, we had a couple of Irondale meetings. And was this brought up then to anyone as far as, to the residents over there? I guess I should say, how was this presented to the residents within the area? Was there a postcard, email, what kind of distribution of information was provided?
It's my understanding, this was a standard notification with postcard and public notification signs and legal advertisements in the newspaper.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns for the staff at this time? Saying none, is the applicant present? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and add any additional information to the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. My name is Corey Miller, and I'm a planner with baseline engineering. Our address is nineteen fifty Forge Street, Golden, Colorado, eight zero four zero one. I'm joined tonight by Mr. Martin Stites, who is the current property owner. Mr. Stites, his family has owned the property for decades. And over time, they've seen the Irondale area transform from what was historically agricultural zoning to industrial uses surrounding the property. With that, he has had trouble selling the property or marketing it under the current uses that are permitted by right. Therefore, he considered rezoning the parcel to something that's more compatible with the neighborhood. And when we met with staff early on, the city made their objectives for the Irondale neighborhood very clear, that it was to be a future industrial use, specifically an I one zoning use. Therefore, Mr. Stites had agreed to satisfy those requests as far as rezoning to an appropriate zone district, and that's the process that we decided to pursue. And we are happy that we were able to move forward with a zoning district that is compatible for, with the area, and one that is in compliance with the future land use map. With that, we are happy to have worked with Mr. Callender. The process has been very, very smooth. We're very excited that there were no referral objectives or objectives so far from the public. As far as additional information, I think that it's been covered rather robustly, and I don't have any additional specific information to add, but I am definitely happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
I have one.
Sure.
Is there a use identified for the property at this time?
There hasn't been as of the point of submitting the application. However, the property owner does have interest from one entity. They are a logistics business, one that I believe has been operating in Colorado since its creation in the lower metro area. However, they would like to see how this all shakes out before they would commit to anything on the property.
Thank you. I do have a question for staff. Pertain to our land development code, there's a requirement that requires, without a use being tied to the zoning, the planning manager would have to waive such requirement. I just want to make sure the planning manager has waived that requirement for the land development code.
That is correct. He has waived this requirement.
All right, thank you. Is there any other questions from the council for the applicant at this time? Saying none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council on this topic that's here this evening? Saying none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And I'm open for a motion and a second to approve the findings and recommendations of the planning commission. Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the facts and findings of the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Hughesman.
Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the findings and facts of the planning commission on case Z nine five zero dash one eight. Council is seated. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to, for the introduction of the ordinance. Mr. Teeter.
Make a motion to introduce the ordinance Z nine five zero dash one eight.
Thank you. Now I need a second. Councilwoman Frank.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance Z nine five zero dash one eight by council is seated. I ask the city attorney, please read the title.
Ordinance Z nine five zero one eight, an ordinance rezoning from IAG to I one. The property described in Exhibit A attached Tier Two and made a part hereof located at the southwest corner of East eighty-eighth Avenue and Willow Street, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning.
Thank you. I ask for a roll call vote. For the record, motions carried, eight in favor, one opposed. And I think it would be prudent if we could get someone from the city to contact the applicant on the last case, that we reconsidered that second reading. Otherwise, he's going to have a bad night. All right, that said, now we're going to go back and take care of these other two. We'll do them together. We have resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-two and ordinance Z nine four seven dash one eight. The next two items are going to be heard under one presentation but voted on separately. I'll remind council to use the hearing to ask questions, but to wait until the hearing is closed to express opinions or indicate how you will vote. I'm going to now open the public hearing and invite the staff forward to give the presentation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. The cases before the council are S dash six nine seven dash one eight and Z dash nine four seven dash one eight. This is, these are two requests, one to subdivide one property into two lots, and a request for a zone change from I three to C three. The property owner is Reese's Real Estate and Equipment LLC, and the applicant is MJ Cassett Architects PC. Briefly, again, zone changes are changing the allowed uses of the land by changing the district, and thus changing the underlying requirements for development in that district. The act of subdividing a property or a subdivision is dividing, consolidating, or reconfiguring the boundaries of a property. Subject property is currently zoned I three, and as you can see, most of the properties that are west and north of the site are also zoned I three. Properties south towards Sixtieth Avenue and Vasquez Boulevard are zoned C three and a mixture of C two. The future land use plan designates this property as commercial. Properties that are just north and west of that site are listed as industrial distribution, and further west is general industrial. And as you can see, properties east of Vasquez are also designated as commercial. The site is currently undeveloped, as shown here in the photographs. It's pad-ready essentially, and including the aerial photograph here, you can see there are no improvements on the existing property. The applicant is requesting the council to approve the subdivision of the subject property into two lots, and the zone change from I three to C three. What is proposed as part of this is a thirty-seven hundred and fifty square foot dental office building, and that would be on the easternmost lot. Dental offices are not allowed by right in the I three zoning district, which is the basis for this rezon request. The dental office will be owned and operated by Reese's Dental and Braces. The lot for the dental office is currently under administrative development plan review, and there are no developments proposed for the westernmost lot. The subdivision plat itself that the council is considering this evening is simply the subdivision of this property into two lots, currently Dexter Street being just to the east here. They have provided adequate access easements on this property, as well as into the interior between the two tracks themselves. Relatively straightforward subdivision. The site plan itself, again Dexter Street being just east of the property itself, they will use the existing driveway serving the rear Walgreens. They'll tie into that with two entrances here, one to a parking area in front of the dental office building, and then one that will extend along the center of the lot boundaries as a private drive that would serve the future access for both the western lot and the Reese's dental lot. As you can see, the proposed building footprint on the site plan, they've included pedestrian connectivity to existing sidewalks along Dexter Street, and they have included the associated landscaping and requirements that meet the requirements of the land development code on their site development plan. The proposed architecture for this building is going to be predominantly brick with stucco and metal accents that would be on all four sides of the building itself. And the existing access for these, for the subject property is extended from an easement that starts on Dexter Street and moves westward through in the Walgreens tract and over to the Pacheco Construction Products site. This allows for left-term movements from these properties back on the Sixtieth Avenue. That was established back in two thousand and four when the Walgreens property was subdivided. The planning commission, the planning commission used the following criteria in the judgment of the subdivision request itself, including the zone change criteria you see listed before you. This is the, these are the basis for the planning commission's recommendation to the council this evening. And on March sixth, the planning commission voted unanimously to approval, for, to recommend approval as submitted to city council for both zoning and subdivision requests. And as of today, the staff has not received any objections or requests for additional information on either request. And that's all that I have on behalf. Answer any questions the council has.
Thank you. The council have any questions of staff concerning the cases before us? Saying none, thank you. Is the applicant present? Please come forward, state your name and address, and add anything you'd like to the city's presentation.
My name is Michael Cassett with MJ Cassett Architects, seven five six three South Slade Court, Centennial, Colorado. Brad has done a great job in presenting what we've tried to do. Reese's has had this property for a couple of years, and they've liked the location, and they're anxious to come into the community. They provide a, a great dental type service for working level families. And so they really feel that this is a, a great location for them and are anxious to be part of.
be part of the community. Essentially, we're just trying to split the lot down so it's effective for their use and hopefully you'll be in support of that. We're just asking to be included in the C-3 commercial zone that's part of the land use plan for the future. And any questions you may have about the project, the building, or the company, we're more than happy to answer your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council have any questions for the applicant at this time? Mr. Douglas.
Yes. Thank you for being here. I had a question. Do you have any plans for that lot, open lot?
Uh, there's none that I know of right now. I know that they are talking to some interested parties, but until it's rezoned and actually becomes a lot, they can't really do a whole lot of wheeling and dealing until they have something to sell, so.
Okay.
The plot is kind of the important part of that whole thing.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else? Saying none, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council on these matters? Saying none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission on case S-652-18. Councilwoman Frank.
I would motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the.
Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept those findings and recommendations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to accept the, approve resolution 2018-22. Mr. Douglas.
So moved. Council is seated.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution 2018-22. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2018-22, resolution approving subdivision plot in case S 652-18.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to introduce ordinance Z 947-18 by council is Councilman Douglas.
So moved.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. For that introduction, will the city attorney please read the title?
Mayor Ford, did you accept the findings and recommendations on that case as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ordinance Z 947-18, an ordinance rezoning from I-3 to C-3. The property described in Exhibit A attached Tier 2 and made a part hereof located at 1691 Dexter Street, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning.
Now, Mr. Attorney, before we continue on, I know you just read the title. We did not get a motion and a second to approve, approve the findings and recommendations for case Z 947-18.
I would recommend acting on the motion before you and then doing that afterwards.
All right. I just wanted to make sure I could do them in, in, in opposite order. All right. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, the ordinance is introduced unanimously by the city council this evening. Now I need to take up facts and findings for the planning commission on case Z 947-18. Is there a motion? Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the facts and findings on case Z-947-18.
Thank you. Mr. Madera.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Thank you for coming in this evening. We're looking forward to seeing a nice new dental office there. All right, now we're going to move into the resolution portion of our meeting. We start with resolution 2018-24. I'd invite the cultural council board members that are here tonight and public art consultant forward for a presentation. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ed Hanson, president of the Commerce City Cultural Council. This is our new public art consultant, Kendall Peterson.
Hi, I'm Kendall Peterson with Their Squared LLC and I live in Stapleton.
Thank you.
Okay. And we're here to share the public art recommendations for the Eagle Point Rec Center.
Let's see. Is that helpful?
Yeah. The public art program stimulates economic growth, attracts businesses, residents, and visitors. It encourages walking and gathering and enhances public appreciation of the arts and strengthens community identity and pride. Resolution 201302, adopted by the Public Art Master Plan to encourage public art, establish consistent selection procedures and manage and maintain art within the city. Ordinance 2037, establish funding mechanism for program allocating 1% of project construction costs towards installation and maintenance of public art.
So I'll take it from here. So this very specific public art program is in regards to the Eagle Point Recreation Center. This is an overview of the budget we have available for public art, the 1% budget, and also we applied for a SCFD grant to augment the art budget. So this is the breakdown and we have, we have a little bit of funds remaining for any buffer that we need that we might come up against. So we have a, a public art selection committee. We held committee meetings four different times, mostly to establish the correct criteria for the site. And we basically considered two different sites for the, for this location. As you know, it's being renovated and there will be a large clerestory area as you come in and the group really wanted to see a suspended piece in the reception area as well as an exterior work of art. So this was, this was the site criteria. We let out a call to artists via callforentry.org and we received 47 applications for the interior site and 27 for the exterior site. And at the third meeting, we selected six semifinalists, all of whom were Colorado-based artists. We selected three for each of the different locations. And the final meeting, we saw presentations by six of those artists and we are today coming to you with a recommend, excuse me, a recommendation for two of those artists to move forward with contracts. The cultural council reviewed and unanimously approved the recommendation on March 13, 2018, but you were unfortunately ill that day, so. So just some images to remind you of the renovations to come. This is the site number one, which is interior. The artwork would be located sort of in this area that is surrounded by the running track. And for this area, there were three different semifinalists that were selected. These are sort of an outline of their proposals that they gave. And the winning artist was Revan Swanson, who is a resident of Denver, Colorado. Annette Coleman came in second and third, Michael Shields. This is an image of what she has proposed. These are fused glass birds. The group of selection members were really interested in harkening to the name of the Eagle Point Recreation Center and so they really want one of, one or two of these birds to be more eagle shaped, but they're quite abstract and they would be suspended from a metal strut system from the ceiling. The architect was also part of this presentation and, and she is aware of everything that's going on, so, and that has been part of the approval process as well. This is a larger diagram that shows where these will be suspended and, and sort of the scope of the project. It will actually reach from one end of the running track to the other and kind of swoop down underneath where the reception area is. So these, we had two or three different locations for the exterior public art. This was option one. This is the area near the pool, the existing pool, and they wanted to see if a two dimensional artwork could be placed on the outside of the building and serve sort of as a way, a wayfinder. You know, you know you've arrived in the, in the right place with Eagle Point. These were two of the other locations. So in the canopy area above the entrance, there was an idea that maybe someone could put something on that canopy or also include a sculpture in the landscaped areas. So these were given to the artists and they were asked to propose for one of these locations. Three artists were, gave us their proposals. All of them were very well received, but Lisa Russell was the winning artist unanimously. This is sort of a maquette. It's not a very good picture of it, but her piece, one of the criteria was to make sure that the eagle was very prominently featured in the artwork. And this is three eagles that are made out of stainless steel, stainless steel plate, and they will be cut, laser cut, so that they have openings in it and it will be backlit so you'll be able to see it at night when a lot of the residents will be going to the recreation center and using the facility. So this is the recommendation that we reached together with the cultural council. The council recommended Revan Swanson for a commission of 72,000 for an interior suspended work of art and then Lisa Russell to receive a contract for 25,000 for the exterior wall sculpture.
Any questions?
Does the council have any questions of the cultural council and representatives at this time? Mr. Teeter.
Yes, well, thank you for your presentation. It looks like you've done your homework. You've put a lot of work into this and I congratulate you for that. A lot of people entered this, so that was also great to hear that we had a lot of competition in there and I just want to commend you for your choices.
Thank you. We're really excited about all of them. Very excited.
It's hard to call it work when it's so much fun.
You know, all I can tell you is it's, it's great to see growing up in this community and finally see us really focusing on having some public art. And when I drive by Pioneer Park and see the, the little kites that are out there and it, it's really nice to see us have some art pieces within our community. So I appreciate what you guys all do. All right. Let's see, is anyone in the audience want to come forward concerning this issue? All right, then I'm open for a motion and a second on resolution 2018-24. Councilwoman Elliott? Your light's not working here. Did you push it?
No.
Okay. I'm still open for a motion.
So moved.
Mine's on.
Yours on. Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to prove, make a motion to approve resolution 2018-24.
Thank you. I need a second. Mr. Wadiola.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2018-24. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2018-24, resolution in support of public art installations for the Eagle Point Recreation Center.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And we have ordinances on first reading. We have ordinance 2165. Is there anyone on council that has any questions regarding this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this matter? Saying none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to make the motion to approve ordinance 2165 on the first reading. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Huesman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney read the title, please?
Ordinance 2165, an ordinance amending section 12-5,006 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to allow the permitted possession of open containers containing fermented malt beverages and venus liquors in city recreation facilities.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Mayor Ford.
Oh, you need a roll call. Sorry. Do a roll call vote. For the record, I passed unanimously on first reading by the city council. All right. We'll move to administrative council business. Before we get too deep into administrative council business, I, I noticed that when I asked for a motion and second, I'm noticing some lights blinking and I can't tell whose they are to be able to call on you because they're just blink, 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 blink. So try to just get the button to light up in front of you, but if you, if there's something wrong with your buttons, we need to get them fixed, but when they blink, I can't tell who's trying to sign in to speak. So if you could, try to hit the button and, and your blue light should light up just like it does where your, where it says present. If that light is lit up, it should be lit up on my machine and after you're done speaking, if that light's still on, if you hit it, then it'll take your name off of my screen. But I, I did notice a lot tonight, a lot of blinking, and so it makes it hard for me to identify who wants to speak. So I apologize to Councilwoman Elliott. Because I didn't know if it was, if it was yours. Well, because I was looking at you and I just thought, maybe it's hers that's blinking and so it's tough. So if, if, if you push it and the light comes on, then it's on my screen. So if your light's on and you don't want to speak, you need to push it again and make it go off because then it'll, it'll stay on my screen if you don't. All right.
Mayor Ford.
Yes, sir.
May I also make a recommendation when council members make motions, since we're talking about motions, to state whether you're intending to approve an action or deny an action. It's often assumed, I think, but if, if it's a matter, sometimes it's unclear.
So moved or whatever, yeah.
Right, unless the mayor stated the specific action.
Right. It's, it's, it's pretty well to, to just state whatever it is, the case, and that you want to make approval or denial. All right? Thank you. All right, now Minister of Council Business, Mr. Teeter, you have a motion?
Yes. First, I'd like to give a little background. The CDOT proposed the amendment to the 2018 days, 2021 Transportation Infrastructure Plan. That's what's, the one is the tip to move funding from Region 1. There's 100 and point, 1.75 million in funding will be reallocated from the 2018 design pool to the 2019 project pool. Dr. Cog Board is meeting on April 18th to vote on the proposed amendments. Staff and I are recommending voting yes and I am asking for council's direction tonight. So I would like to make a motion that, make a motion that council approved the funding in favor of proposed tip amendments.
All right, and hopefully all of you recall, that's the amendment that I talked to you all about. So I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Blinking, Mr. Huesman's blinking. Now Mr. Madera. Mr. Madera.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Did you do that on purpose?
No, I was trying to.
All right, well, if there's a problem, we'll fix it. I have a motion and a second to approve said, said motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for discussion of additional administrative council business. Mr. Wadiola's blinking. It's not working? So there's a problem up here. I'm just telling you, there's a lot of blinking. Yeah. Mr. Wadiola, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment in, in moving forward, when it comes to consent agenda items that are big like the one we had to vote about with the contractors, if we could do a study session or add it to. we could do a study session, or add it to a study session, so we could have a lot more discussion about that, so.
Alright. So, I want to make a request of staff to have the lights checked, because something's definitely wrong. There, there's several of them that aren't staying on. I know Wadiola's and Huesman's are both blinking, and, and maybe Madera and Frank's are blinking as well. Any other administrative council business?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Oh, yes.
Your light works, I can tell you. Just so you know.
Thank you. Um, I had sent this, uh, to Lisa. Um, she was gonna pres, help me present this tonight. It's not till May eighteenth, it's, uh, almost home spring out of homeless gala. It's, uh, their biggest, largest fundraiser of the year. Uh, this allows disadvantaged families from becoming homeless, are securing permanent housing for those who have found themselves unfortunately already, uh, not in a home. Um, last year alone, they provide assistance to over one thousand one hundred and forty-five individuals, but out of that, five hundred and ninety-six of them being children. And, um, so there's different levels of sponsorships, and it's, it's a dinner. Um, so I will have, um, Lisa draft that and send that out, um, prior. So what I'll do is, on April sixteenth, I will present this to you at that time, administrative council business, uh, for your approval, but I will send it prior to that, so you guys can see exactly what I'm asking. So I'm not asking tonight to approve it, but just for you aware of what's gonna be coming to you. So, thank you.
Alright, thanks, Steve. Anyone else, Minister of Council Business? Saying done, we'll move on in the agenda to reports. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did distribute the email, this week's edition of the City Manager Report. Uh, we have an update on a retail attraction report the City Council asked us to develop. It's still in the development phase. We hope to have that ready and out to you in the next couple of weeks, and then the idea would be, we'll repeat that on a monthly basis, continue to refresh the information. Uh, I'll be out of the office, uh, the rest of this week. Troy Smith will be the acting city manager. Uh, we did provide, as I alluded to earlier, uh, an oil and gas update. There is a page on our website already. What we are looking to do is really beef up the information on that website with current information about both COG/CC applications and city applications as we start to receive them. But for a list of current COG/CC spacing applications, we have that in the report, along with a map that shows the sections in the city, uh, where they are looking, uh, to seek that approval, and then, uh, of course, the legislative report and the city council work schedule. So please reach out if you have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
I have nothing to report this evening.
No reports from the attorney, but we got his head spinning tonight, so that's good.
I have a quarterly report for the first quarter of twenty eighteen that I'll be providing in the next week or two.
Yeah. If you have time, with all the other stuff we're stacking on you. I'm just giving you our time, Robert. Um, so I met with a company called Street Media, um, and I'll, I'll tell you why. Um, the former commissioner and former mayor of Brighton reached out to me to have a meeting with Street Media concerning digital sign message boards. They're proposing to Adams County, um, a sign message board at a hundred and twentieth and Highway eighty-five. And they, uh, were asking if we would have an interest in participating in that digital message board. Um, and we would get a certain amount of programming on that digital message board, and those messages could be, you know, accident up ahead, um, avoid this area, there, you know, schools on lockdown, whatever. It could be those kind of safety messages, and it could also be messages of, uh, visit our new rec center at this location, whatever. They also have the ability to, um, work with us to try to put message boards, like along Tower Road, E four seventy, Highway two, whatever, that would be, uh, programmed by the city and informative to our residents about upcoming events, ongoing activities, or emergency-type, um, information, and that could be up to, uh, uh, just stating, you know, slow down, whatever, uh, you know, follow speed limits, wear your safety belts, whatever that may be. Uh, but the important part of me, meeting with these folks is talking about their ability to come up with, um, message, uh, message-type signs, digital messaging boards that would be able to identify blocked crossings at, like a hundred and fourth and Highway eighty-five, and I, and, and notifying people at Highway two and a hundred and fourth to be able to alter their routes to avoid a blocked crossing at the next set of tracks further down, or vice versa, coming the other way. And I know that's something that was brought up when we did our federal advocacy trip, so I'm interested to see if they can, uh, take care of some issues or needs within our community, and I know, uh, Roger was, uh, slated to meet with that company. I don't know if you had yet or not, but, oh, you have? Okay, great. So, um, we'll get some more information on that. Uh, we had the US eighty-five public meeting. I do know, uh, Rick and Steve both attended that. Did anybody else? I don't want to leave anybody else out. Um, and that was, uh, talking about all of the Highway eighty-five impacts, uh, that potentially be, could be coming our way, or improvements. I had Rotary, and then we had the, uh, Suncor Youth of the Year Dinner, and, uh, Mr. Douglas attended that on behalf of the council. Um, I also attended NADA, which is the Northern Area Transportation Authority. Then, uh, we had our city event. Uh, we recognized those, those, uh, folks this, this evening for the Adams County Mayor's Commissioners Youth Award Dinner for the recipients of Commerce City. Um, a lot of really good stories, really good kids, doing a lot of good things to overcome adversity. Um, so that was, uh, a good evening, um, to be able to, to engage with those youth. Um, we had the Suncor Energy Tour. I want to thank Suncor for putting, putting that on. Um, in all the years that I have served this, uh, city on this council, it was the first, uh, opportunity that we were given to have a tour. They're in their shutdown phase right now, and we were able to, uh, see their new wastewater plant that they put in, and, uh, extremely impressive, some of the new equipment and new technology that they're using at the refinery. Um, let's see, several council members attended that. Um, Jose on his birthday, and, uh, Steve, right?
Yes.
Rick, myself, Oscar, and I believe that's it, correct? Did I miss anybody?
And Roger.
And Roger, staff member was there. So, um, no, it was, it was great to have that opportunity. Then Rotary again, and then we had a tour with Republic Services. Uh, we went over and saw their facility on two twenty-four, uh, their fleet. Um, a large percentage of their fleet runs on natural gas, uh, CNG-type vehicles, um, and CNG only. They're not convertible. You can't go from regular gas to CNG. They're straight CNG. They actually have a fueling station onsite that fuels those trucks over an eight-hour period of time at, at night, so that they're ready to go again in the morning. Um, toured the landfill and talked to them about, uh, additional increase in, uh, services that, that we may be able to tap into. So I want to thank Republic Services for, uh, giving us that tour. I think it was me and Steve and Oscar, right?
Yep.
Great. And then, um, of course, I can't have two weeks go by without having ACC meetings, um, that I have attended, and that completes my report this evening. If anybody has anything additional they'd like to add to my report, now's the time. Mr. Douglas?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, additionally, uh, just over on Saturday, uh, sorry, on Saturday, I attended a Housing Resource Fair. Uh, it was a, um, it was over at We Ridge High School, the reason why I attended, um, um, Congressman Ed Perlmutter was hosting, and along with that were different representatives from HUD, uh, Department of Housing, CHAF, uh, Colorado Housing and Realty Association, Colorado Association of Home Builders, um, State Senator, District Twenty-nine, Tracy Kraftthorpe was on the panel as well, and just discussed the affordability of, um, homes within, buying homes within Colorado, uh, the challenges. Commerce City was mentioned several times, uh, as far as maybe, not won't say the last, but, um, trying to make homes affordable, and that's, that's a hard deal to, um, I guess, process because of the value of homes now are so high. Um, I think the average home now is around three seventy-five, four hundred thousand. Boulder, um, let's see, the cost of living, the average home in Boulders is around a million dollars now. Um, they did pass a growth initiative, um, as far as building, so things are kind of, uh, slow and moving in Boulder. Um, there is, I think there's a bill going forward, um, or something due on the ballot that will stop residential growth from Lakewood, and, um, they do have that in Lakewood, and now they're trying to pass it on to the state of Colorado. The, the problem with stopping growth is, is if you prevent any more homes being built, residential housing, then the prices go up, uh, because you don't have anything to offset that as far as trying to keep the cost down by having, um, inventory, you take that ability away. So, um, we would really be not a very, as far as competitive, uh, other states, but looked upon as, um, to be very expensive to live here in Colorado, and then that would short sight anyone trying to sell their homes, uh, because if you sell it, you gotta have someplace to live, and probably cost you more to buy something in that market, so. Also, um, came out and supported, um, Councilman Qualiola for the Caesar Chavez Leadership Award over in City of Denver, and, um, appreciate him, uh, proud of him receiving that, uh, honor, so. Oh, and, um, Oscar Madera was there as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say congratulations to Jose Wadiola, um, on that achievement as well. And I'm glad that you, uh, added to my, uh, reports, because there's one other thing I wanted to add, is, um, last Thursday, I attended one of Congressman Perlmutter's, uh, events where they do the Vietnam Veteran Penning Ceremony, and, uh, there was a panel of, uh, a family of three, uh, veterans from Vietnam, and they talked about their experiences and how they, as a, as family members, got to run into each other, uh, in different aspects of their duties in Vietnam. Um, and they, uh, there was a family of four, but one of the brothers passed away. So, you know, he is doing something that I think is extremely important, um, to the Vietnam vets and for our community and the region by respectfully acknowledging the, the members of, of the, the veterans that fought in Vietnam. So, um, I was glad to be able to be at that event and see how that acknowledgement is passed on to the recipients, and I know the, the room was packed. It was Adams, Adams Twelve School District Conference Room, and it was packed, and, uh, I know the people there are extremely appreciative of what he's doing, and I believe former Mayor Protem Bullock received that veteran's pen, and I believe current Mayor Protem, uh, Teeter received that veteran's pen.
Very proud.
Yep, so, uh, thank you to, uh, the congressman for doing that for, uh, veterans in our community. Alright, if there be nothing further to come before the City Council of Commerce City, we are adjourned. I'm gonna open up the northern infrastructure.